This conference will now be recorded.
Call this regulator meeting of Lovington City Commission to order. Shannon, roll call please.
Mayor Roberts.
I am Mayor.
Commissioner Tridio.
Here.
Mr. Dandy.
Here.
Mr. Bo.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
You'll join me for our on the pitch. Father God, we just want to take this time to thank you for many blessings that you've bestowed on us. Father, we just thank you for the rain that you provided. We thank you for the break in the heat. It's been well received. Father, we were just ready for it. Father, finally, we just want to thank you for allowing us to live in this wonderful community. And we ask that as we go through tonight, Father, you take this time and you just invoke your wisdom and your understanding. And Father, we just ask that we are able to receive that and use it to make the decisions that help our community move forward. Father, we ask that you watch over this meeting and get us home safe. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
So I'm going to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Solicitor flag of the state of New Mexico. See you. Yes. Um, you have to call. Maybe see. Or not. Well, it's the only. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the agenda crystal. No judgment.
No, yes.
Uh, the rule agenda has submitted. Ah, we have a motion. It really has submitted any discussion. During that, Shannon, roll call.
Commissioner Tridio.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for considerations of minutes August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion second on the adoption of the minutes. Any discussion, correction? Hearing that, Shannon, roll call please.
Commissioner Dandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Yes. Ah, bring us to our commissioners. May Shannon, would you like to start this evening?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners is probably aware that public numbers are climbing in our community. And so if you distribute some guidelines to the department, keep those out to your staff. So the latest thing they have on the CBT guidelines, we just want to see if it's following me.
It's all the county's fault for the theory. Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, all.
Oh, okay. Questions? Ms. Jess? Maybe a second.
Um, yes, I've been doing the ICIP, working on that. So it's been a, it's been very big eye opener, actually, learning, learning experience. So I entered some new information, new projects into the system. And I'm sure that city manager is going to be sharing those with you, so I won't go over those. But Dora, she's really helped me out a lot. Commissioner White, she's given me, she's helped me some as well. And but I've also followed up with some that have agreements coming in, that will be coming in shortly on some that we were, we already had in the, in the works. Some that had agreements already in the works for twenty twenty-four. And so those will, you know, will be coming in and we'll be able to work with the, some, some of the projects that were already on a list. I believe there's one, two, three, four. I believe there's like five of them, five projects that are already, that we had for twenty twenty-four that we're going to be getting funds for. Um, so those should be here shortly. And they're just typing up the agreements so that they can send them to us. So we'll have the funds to spend on getting those projects done. And I've also followed up with Dora on another project where we were getting, where we had the invoices from Pettigrew. So we could retrieve some money that we spent on some other, another project where we had spent some money and we were trying to retrieve back the money, the funds that we spent. And so she's working with me on that because they had already been allotted to us. We're just trying to get those funds back. So she's working with me on that today to, to, so we can get reimbursements.
Tell her if she has any extra.
Yeah, well, we're working on that too.
Okay.
Get some extra money on that. So, so it's kind of, I'm just kind of trying to find out, you know, if we have anything out there that we haven't already. Maybe we sent the funds, the paperwork in, but we just haven't retrieved that from. It's kind of a, it's kind of a see where we're at right now.
I appreciate your notes. All right, questions? Is that all, Miss Jess? Just want to say that. Chief Jackson?
No, not much. Mayor Commissioner, I don't have much to, just, just this evening. Just that we got our new radios in and the portable ones have been issued out to officers. On a sad note, I had an officer who lost his girlfriend. He's going to be the sole father of two small children, so just keeping me, have any prayers?
Sorry to hear that. Questions? Hearing that. Fire chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of commission. So the state approved the carryover of the remaining state fire grant funds from twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. This was one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, thirty-seven cents. We're going to use that for repairs to our tanker and to buy some new bunker gear and do some station repairs as well. We had two of our part-time employees transitioned to full-time. So as of today, the department is fully staffed of the positions that were open, the eighteen. We still have the three positions that were frozen during COVID, but we'll fill them when the commission allows us to open those back up. The ships have gone back to their regular forty-eight, ninety-six hour tours. So each can, each ship consists of four EMTs and two of them certified and all done certified fire classes. We have changed our Sharpe disposal company from Stair Cycle to Ally. So our bill went from two thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven, ninety-five a month to seven hundred and sixty-seven a month. And then we also reworked the contract with Ausco, which is our lending service. And our bill went from three thousand months, a month to approximately seven hundred a month. So we're saving approximately four thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and ninety-five cents a month. The fire department is also now selling the breast cancer awareness T-shirts like we did last year, a different design. They are twenty dollars a shirt and you can place orders at the fire department. Capital outlet for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. One thing that I would like to get is, we're asking for two van type ambulances. They're called the type two ambulance and that's that packet that I gave you when I came in. And these will be used for long distance transfers only. That's literally what they're set up for. Some people call them sprinters, they're called different stuff, but they're a type two van type. They will save on fuel and wear and tear on the big box ambulances because each one of those big box ambulances are three hundred and fifty thousand plus for each ambulance. And for these van styles, we can get them for a hundred and thirty-three thousand a piece. And that's definitely going to save us on fuel. I mean, we're spending a hundred and fifty, at least every trip to Lovett on fuel. And if we go with the gas powered engine, we're looking at about seventy-five. So that's, that's something I'm looking at. Then we can get rid of one of the big box ambulances that just keeps costing us money or just don't want to, because they're getting old. And those will literally just be used for. The numbers for July, our total EMS was two hundred and forty-one interfacility transfers. We had forty-five airport transfers. We had nine refusal canceled DOAs. We had eighty-one, we had six Tatum calls and twenty fire calls. So at this point, that's the, at this time, that's all I have an off standing for any questions. Okay.
So on the sprinter, the sprinter talking about, basically that's just for transit. We just, anything that was going to love it, that was.
Love it, go best. There you go. We just put them in the back and go. Now, if we ever get back to the point where normally calls says, hey, we've got two going to the covenant, can you take both of them together? At that point, of course, we'd have to take the big box, but we haven't done that. We've made it three times since COVID started.
So you could actually improve the cost of the, you could have two of those.
I could have two of those for less than the price of one big box.
I remember we had talked about this fall back, but there was a reason why you said you didn't want the same, but now you're saying.
No, I don't want them for emergency. I didn't want them for emergency, but as far as transports, they're perfect. Not for emergency, because you can't work a car with one of those. There's.
Can't stand up.
You can't stand up. But as far as one patient, going back and forth to Lovett, they're perfect. Yes, sir. Sorry, I, if I didn't convey that last time.
No.
Yeah, but as far as in town, the big boxes, what we have to use for working a patient. Thank you.
Your first number that you gave out is two hundred and something.
Two hundred and forty-one, the EMS runs?
The total EMS runs?
I don't know. It was just a very.
Two hundred and forty-one.
Okay, EMS. Okay, sorry, that was what I, I wasn't sure.
Yes.
I missed. Do you have, in some form or fashion, whether calendar year, fiscal year, whatever, how many Lovett runs we make per year? That'd have to be precise.
About nine hundred. Well, not necessarily Lovett, but long distance.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. So we would literally be, hopefully, if it worked out right, we'd be cutting our fuel costs in half. And we spent, I want to say about forty-five hundred dollars a month on fuel. Two per day. We're averaging at least two a day.
Yeah.
And sometimes we're like Los Curstis, Amarillo, so we take some longer distance.
Be nine thousand. I will not say it. That would be your total and then split it forty-five.
Yes.
Good save. Thank you. Any further questions? Well, thank you, President. Commissioner Bo.
Same old, same old.
Well, you have a, I wanted to tell you, you have a complaint because somebody has pirated your slogan. And then they, not only did they pirate it, too, and it was leak any state bank. So I literally, as I'm driving here.
Really?
Yeah, shop local, buy local, shop local, van local.
I did not plan on that.
That's terrible.
Eat local, shop local, buy local. I mean, people approached me, you know, because they get tired of hearing me say that. Sometimes I get tired of saying that, but I think it's not a betterment of our community. And I know that you can go other places, you can get stuff cheaper. I understand that if it doesn't work for you, it doesn't work for you. I just say consider hometown first. Consider the businesses we have here, the stores we have here, the restaurants we have here. And all I've heard, you can only eat the same place so many days of the week. I understand it. I understand.
It goes on Sundays.
Yep. But, you know, and, you know, even when you're fueling up, you know, you're fueling up, fuel up here in Lovington, you know. You know, you might be saving a few cents, ten cents. I don't know how much it is in house because I don't go down there to fuel up. I fuel up here. Sunny little thing that we do to help our community out, let's do it to help ourselves out. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Commissioner Tridio.
I'm good.
Thank you. Commissioner White. Commissioner Dade.
I have a plan to get through this.
Okay. Melissa?
Mayor Commissioners, I don't have anything for tonight, but if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Anyone? Hearing that?
Ah, Sydney. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, members of the public. The latest GRT, latest GRT figure for Lovington, which covers the month of June, came in at one point zero one million. This compares with three, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand from the previous month and six hundred, or eight hundred and sixty-four thousand for the same period last year. The monthly average GRT for the last trailing twelve months is up to nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars per month. Second, Mr. Ed Fiero, who will present on the budget later this meeting, has closed out the votes for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And we have also retained a DFA expert to help us prepare and submit our year-end DFA report to the state in a timely manner. Third, we continue to work on our water department filling study. Last week, we had two technicians from Census in town for several days. Census is the company which produces and administers our residential water meters. I am confident we are close to resolving this very complex issue. We will have a comprehensive report to the commission by November, at which time we can determine a fair pricing system in a week, in which we can have total confidence in. However, the system needs major upgrades after seven years of service. I have found a reauthorized existing water grant from which we can fund these improvements. Fourth, CNN Electric has been working with the Parks Department to repair broken lights at the basketball courts, volleyball courts and skate park at Chaparral Park. Additionally, we're waiting on a quote from a security camera system, forest security set camera system in the park so as to deter vandalism. Fifth, we will cover our current I C I P capital outlay request later in this meeting. But in an update on capital outlay requests we have been recently approved for, we expect to receive contracts in the next two weeks for projects. Thanks to the help of Randy Pettigrew and David Gallagos, we can begin spending on. These include three hundred thousand dollars for a new fire department brush fire truck, three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for new police cars, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for upgrades to our public safety complex, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for municipal facility IT upgrades and six hundred and forty thousand dollars for utility heavy equipment. These, along with two junior build appropriations totaling a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, mean we will be encumbering two million dollars of our general fund until we are reimbursed by the state. Added to existing older grants, we would have a total of four million dollars of encumbered funds until we got reimbursed by the state. We do have those funds available to initially pay out. I pass all department heads who received grants to solicit bids for the projects to get them started immediately. Then we will make sure we submit the necessary credit work to get the money refunded from the state. In other grants and related items, we have the utility poles at the softball field suspected last week. Eight poles need replacing before we can install the new lights. We are entering into phase two of our RECO broadband Maddox grant. In reference to the Veterans Memorial, I have reached out to the realtor to locate the owner of the last property needing to be raised. And finally, we had the youth center appraised last week and we are awaiting that report to explore options for that structure. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions the commissioners have.
Not full. Question? Commissioner Bo.
David, as far as the gentleman that came in here, as far as with our water system, doing a survey on it, our wells and everything, or what we have, where are we getting on that?
In terms of the wells?
No, as far as where.
Oh, our residential?
He was going to come in, he. Talk to us as far as with the wells, finding everything that hasn't been, our water lines and all that.
I don't know. We have, we had an asset management class here last week, but that's just our asset management program. Um, we applied for a water pour prep for one point eight million, but that hasn't been finalized yet. Yeah.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to ask on that. Not at all, I should be addressing you, Patrick or whatever. I had a question. Somebody asked me, what's going on with the solar plant? Sorry, I haven't heard anything on that. Just wondering if we're still moving forward. What's the deal?
My understanding is they're still in their phase of taking a look at, you know, if the sun right or not there that is here. And to see what else is available. I think primarily on most of these projects, they're not just looking at, you know, how much UV is available, but also access to the grid. And so if you have a really windy spot, really sunny spot, it works as far as generating that. You've got to give the power to a transmission line and you've got to get that moved somewhere. So my guess is, and I'll follow up on it, but my guess is they're waiting to see what happens for the ability to get into a transmission line and send that power somewhere inside the building. So the crystal may have an update on that.
So, yeah, I have ten monthly meetings with that still. We are, currently, they are still in their environmental phase in studies. So that's, I mean, that's take a while to do.
Right, right.
And like you said, it does have to give up a lot of the other stuff.
I was just asking.
I do have ten monthly meetings with that. So when it gets ready to start being a more fixed and happen thing.
Right. Okay, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I think we don't agree a couple of things. Commissioner Bo brought up a good question. There's, they, they're supposed to pay us annually on that, have they been making payment?
So they haven't, so they start the annual payments when they start, like, doing anything on the property. They haven't done, you know.
No, they're supposed to make payments like, there's another payment they're supposed to make. It's not a big.
The lease payment for the property, so?
It's like a whole payment and they're making it annually. There is a payment that's due every year. And I can't remember what it's.
Yeah, there is, there is a payment. I'll have to go back and take that. I think that was two or three years ago and we negotiated that. But there is a, there is a payment that's made for that option and for their ability to go out and do the investigation that they're due. Once they do that, they pay so much in acreage on that. And then once they decide that that site is, meets the conditions that they need, then it goes into the next phase. But there is a payment that's, that's, should be paid, you know, annually as they go along through their utilities phase.
Thank you. I, one other question, Mr. Mayor. So how are you managing when it comes to your full account, your general fund account and your operating account? I mean, you've mentioned a lot of, a lot of spending. And we're without a treasure right now, so I'm trying to figure out. And, and, and it's how are you managing all three? Because you've got the ICIP, you're saying you're reducing funding to, for vehicles and so forth. And, and where I'm getting that is that, because you have your operation account and you're saying GRTs are up, but we budgeted for eight hundred thousand pretty much monthly is what I'm saying. Right, so I'm saying, how are you ensuring that it doesn't exceed that? Because you have all this money that came in from the county, all this money that came in, all that. I just want to make sure that once we start going over our operating money, which we allocated during our budgeting. Where you put the brakes on everybody, because right now, sometimes I worry. And not, it's because the way you presented yourself is, is great. But what I'm saying is, I just see a lot of money going out the door. I just want to make sure that we don't find ourselves spending two million dollars into what the county gave us. And we'll say, we'll pay it back later because now, I will see that you dip into your savings and it's, and it's hard to put it back. And, and I know, just like you mentioned with the old I C I P, all these items that, that we have, that is another two million. I mean, you're starting, you're looking at millions, right? Then today, and I'm just saying, how are you able to manage that without a treasure right now? I just want to find us a total to where we're like four million dollars and then also trying to find funding.
No, I totally agree with you. So whether you consider the county funds or not, the way I see it is four million dollars that we have in the bank have ten right now, not including the three million in the general fund reserves is locked up. So in other words, four to five million is spoken for. Now, if we do everything just right and on time, we'll get that money back, maybe in one month, maybe in six months, maybe up to a year. I, I think it's closer to three months. But that money's spoken for. When we get it back, great, we can decide what to do with them. What I look at is, there's five million in there that I can't touch. Mr. Fiero has done our cash adjustment, which I sent out to everybody last weekend and we'll review it again today. But our balance sheet is very healthy. So basically, these are, that's why in this year's ICIP, we didn't just submit a laundry list of things. We submitted only seven corrections, six items. You know, very moderate in terms of expenses. So I'm looking out to go out and ask for an unrealistic amount, even more. So the way I look at it and the way I manage it until we get a treasure is five million dollars is spoken for and we can't touch that. And even if we use that tomorrow, we're still in good shape.
Can you just bring us a report, I guess, probably? When you get it, I know it's still ninety days out. It's something I'd like to look at is to making sure that we do, or we are managing.
Right, and Mr. Fiero wants to speak later about budget adjustment might be a, a hint to that, but.
And that's another thing, that was another big ticket right there, making a budget of over, a budget just over a million dollars. I just see numbers going in, they're big numbers, they're not tens, tens of millions.
Right, but as he, as he tells me in a little, four months later, that will not be coming out of our bank account. That is just a budget adjustment that's not going to come out of our bank. So we're actually in the healthiest condition we've been in for probably five years.
Yes. If you want to keep.
Well, you have to administer our grants that are, you got a lot of the grants that are existing that are on the books.
The adjustment.
Oh, the adjustment.
Well, it's not coming out, is it? Just not sticking in the right places?
Correct. I'll let Mr. Fiero elaborate on that.
And, and I think that's, when you look at the big picture, that's from looking at, you've got your grant, your client grant, you've got your ICIP. You got your operation, you know, they all coincide and, and I, you know, I just want to make sure we got, not to say, I'm not, not, you know, saying you're not managing. I just want to ensure that we are managing because that's a lot, a lot of doors we have open.
Right.
Find ourselves in a world of hurt overnight because we do something.
We've got something like twenty-three actual grants. And what kills me is when we get a grant, go through all that trouble and then we spend the money upfront and then we don't do something right to get the money back. So that's more active money.
That's why we have to manage that debt. Exactly. That's scary.
Exactly, and that's why I'm tracking it and I'll take responsibility while the department reach one of those grants. It falls on both of us. Can't find it to get the paperwork up to DFA in a timely manner.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Ball.
Um, I don't really have anything to report. Unless you guys have questions for me.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes, we discussed about the lighting on Main Street. Now, I wanted to find out, because from my understanding, we're going to be putting these lights and they're not the county electric's responsibility.
Correct.
So what are we going to do as a city? As far as, are we going to get a maintenance agreement? You know, because this is a main thoroughfare going through here. We have lights go out. Who's going to be responsible? We don't want to have lights out for.
I can send you those maintenance agreements because we actually, the city commission, when this is when Wyatt and then we're over this project.
Right.
They actually, the city commission signed off on the maintenance agreements with those, with the utilities and the lighting, everything that had to do with this project. So I can send you a copy of that so you see it. But, yeah, I, I had found out recently too, when you've been emailing me and asked that, that, yeah, those, the new light poles and everything would be the city's.
Right.
That's just like old light poles that are going out. And M D O T was asking me, well, why are, why are they taking, aren't those you guys' light poles? I said, no, they've always been leaking. NMDOT was asking me, well, why are, why are they taking, aren't those you guys' light poles? I said, no, they've always been Lee County Electric.
Right.
And they maintain them. And so, uh, they said, well, these ones you guys have paid for, so they're yours.
Right.
So yeah, we will have, I will have to go over that maintenance agreement. I'll send it to you so you can go over it and we'll.
Right. I just wanted to find out who we're going to have.
Because that will be another thing in our asset management plan that I wanted to add to that plan. If we need a maintenance cost to do those and to figure out those, that could be something we have to add.
I would say that'd be better to have a maintenance agreement with someone to take care of it. Than just to call somebody up and tell us, well, it'll be three weeks before we can get the light.
Well, that's why NMDOT wanted the city to take it over because they don't want that thing.
Right. Okay. Sure we don't have.
And some of those agreements were already signed before it came over.
Then I understand some of them were before.
Before you were here too.
Right. So, but it's. For the extras, because apparently citizens typically drive over one at least once a year. At least.
Well, we will have to, we will have to order the extras and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can say that with a clap.
And that might be where it becomes a thing where we need to actually do a maintenance contract with Lee County Electric. Cause we don't have the vehicles or the manpower to maintenance those type of lights. So I know that Lee County did that with the decorative was around the courthouse. They did a maintenance agreement with the courthouse about those lights. Um, so we may look at something with the same thing, because I know we did an agreement with NMDOT that it would be our responsibility. So.
Anything further from the ball? Thank you. Good, good. Glad you're back.
I, I've got some comments, uh, coming up on some act tonight. I was in a closed session. I don't have anything new, but I'd be happy to stick with any questions you have.
I see everybody's saying maintenance.
All right.
We'll, we will listen to you later.
All right.
All right. All right. And then tonight, move us to our public comment time. We have a pretty thin crowd tonight, but we will, this time, uh, for anyone that'd like to come forward to the podium, state your name. Tell us what you'd like to hear. And then we will be moving on. So. See a big rush. I know she's getting up. I will. Good evening.
Mayor Commissioners, I just wanted to remind everyone our facade improvement grant closes this Thursday, has been available on the website every day. I emailed it out twice and then Star also went by the different businesses and dropped off application. If anybody has any questions, let me know. It's not too late to call Crystal Wallace and get your signature on your grant, because you need to do that in order to apply. Um, but other than that, I was. Thursday.
This, this individual right here that has the, the building right here, adjacent to the city hall. And he's an old, elderly, but how do you reach out to people like that?
I normally call my contacts. Um, I do know who owns that. I do have the contact information for who owns that building. Um, if, if you guys have anything in particular, I don't mind, we like discussing it with you afterwards and maybe.
Yeah.
Uh, but for the most part, I do have absolutely a little list of contacts. And then also I do have a real good word and so she helps us get contact information for different businesses or property owners.
Cause I feel much like he was, you know, doing some painting and I told him that you have something like that available every now and then. And, uh, but I don't have his contact number.
Joe, we had actually talked to him in the past, uh, about it. He doesn't feel that he needs to apply it. Uh, he does keep and maintain his property pretty regularly on his own. We never have any issues with like weeds or trash or anything like that. Um, I think his, if you asked him, I think he would say the little corner right beside him is more troublesome than anything. Uh, but I, yes, we have actually, we do talk to him and he's, he's kind of, I'm fine. I'll bet you're fine. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Saying no move, we'll be moving on. Please start on action now. Discussion of the CFP, Mr. Miranda.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, as we stated earlier, uh, for you is this year's submissions for the ICP capital outlay grants. Um, we still don't have our ranking system kind of worked out, but I can direct your attention to page two. Uh, last year, Dr. Martinez really kind of shortened this, uh, ICIP list, which had a lot of old stuff on it. It still has some projects on it that frankly, I don't know what they involve. But if you look at highlighted six projects, those are this year's submissions from the various departments. Um, so we ranked them one to six in no particular order. And I know Chief Morhan went over his submission request, but I brought here, uh, Robert Perez to talk about his wastewater asks. Chief Jackson, if he wanted to talk about his parking lot on it for the police station. Uh, we have Debbie because the library roof is in need of repair. And then, um, so basically those are the seven new ones and we've eliminated some from last year that we perceived approval for. So I'll start off, we may be with Robert Perez to talk about ICPI ask number one, which is wastewater treatment plant upgrade for five hundred thousand. And then we have a second task, which is the North Love lift station for four hundred thousand.
Commissioner, Mayor, the, uh, first of all, the lines that the wastewater plant, the airlines that we distributed digesters are all leaking. They've been leaking for a long time. They're going to have to be replaced because variation will happen. I know it just sounds like it's a desperate thing, but we won't have anything. You won't give a project points. We usually have stuff we don't get voted for. We've looked into several different things of getting replaced, but we don't know for sure exactly what it takes to get it fixed. I think a couple of commissioners were out there this past week that looked at it. So we have more than I did what we're talking about. That's something that needs to be done. That's all I can say, that they need to be done. As far as the, the other part, the waste, the, uh, pit station on North Love, the stuff is coming in. We've got to do something different there. We've got too much stuff coming in, but we'll be back there now. We can put pumps in there now, but you'll be replacing them a year or so. We're spending money now that we won't be able to, you know, that money is going to be lost as we're using pumps or not. The, the money that I'm asking for that, we had somebody come out and it's just been fixing the hole, making it a wet one. Pumps that go up the tin horse, reversible pumps that reverse themselves. It should be able to handle lots of this coming in on that side. As far as the sludge, the, the other, uh, path for the RV dumping, you've had to in the past on shutdown. People are just abusing them. You probably may be going up at the plant, some supervision where they're open whenever the pass open, you know? Keep an eye on what they're dumping and figure out a way to make that work there for plants. That's another thing that everybody keeps asking about. You don't have anything yet. You gotta drive hop and do it. So that's something.
That one you don't see in front of you. We have to add that one. That was for seventy-five. And bear in mind on the North Love lift station, that's also in anticipation of possibly getting a supermarket and other development in that area as well as normally expanding. So there's a lot of waste that's being produced and will be produced up in that area town.
Isn't there, isn't there like a bypass or something that needs to be put in that area too? Or is that included in this?
That's, that's a different thing. Uh, what we're trying to do is kind of down to what people want to do right now, keep it, stuff's coming in, keep it going. Uh, that's something different. That's, that's going to have to be a responsible.
How much, how much more do you think it would cost to throw that in there?
You know, just the gas maybe it's a hundred and fifty thousand. Everything's there. It's, it's a lot of money. It's not.
I know it's, it's a issue when those pumps go down and transfer food. So there's actually something that needs to be done because maintenance does happen every once in a while.
Question, do we think? I went out there and I looked at it and I see firsthand as far as the air leaks and they are pretty bad. I don't know how many other commissioners were able to make it, but they are bad. And I also understand that we were talking about things that get thrown in with waste and toilets. And I was thinking, is there any way, I know that we've put in our water bill a couple of times a year as far as ten percent discount for senior citizens and disabled and that. Is there any way we could put something in there to just inform people not to throw certain articles, diapers, whatever, in your toilets and flush it down, even though it's a.
This kind of people are probably overall ten thousand gallons of oil.
Right. And I said, all that takes a beating on our system.
Yes, sir. And we've done it, PSA's on Facebook and English is managed and we're trying to get the message out there.
Yeah.
Whether some of it's being done maliciously, it's very hard to tell. It's very hard to trace.
Yeah. And I said, if, if somebody sees that, that makes one or two people, one or two people less, you know, and and I said, it's a culture. It's a culture. It's a learning curve for people. If people take pride in their community, they care about their community, they care about being able to get up at two o'clock in the morning and flush your toilet, not have to worry. Uh, I would make sure that there were certain things I didn't throw in my. So, but I mean, that means getting everybody involved in the community. I would think that if we can do that, to maybe try to help.
We're looking at some things today. We, we restocked today. Some people, they've got some monitors. We might be able to stick some of the lift spaces with the camera, with the sensor and it give you a, we have this somebody for something that might even learn phone or some kind. I'm not too sure if I'd have checked the pool or anything, something like that. It's a possibility for some of the buildings.
I think it's possible, I think, take another step on, I don't know if it's even considered a crime. It could be, I don't know how to interpret intentional destruction of city property. As long as we have something that's, I mean, that part, it'd be part of the, uh, letter to be submitted to, you know, out there that, that nobody is a crime. So that way maybe that might, but Robert, I'd like to meet you too on your guys. They looked sharp the other day. It's been about a month back when I saw them all dressed in blue. I want to take a picture when I was in the rush, but man, that was the first time I seen that. To me, it shows it's your discipline within your, your outfit out there and it shows. It makes the city look good too. So I, I can meet you on that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're doing a good job. As far as, I just want to tell you the same thing that I appreciate, uh, your, everything you're doing at the plant and in our collection system. Uh, you're getting the troops together and don't be scared to put enough money in there because we need to realize that we got to, uh, start upgrading our systems. So anyways, I mean, I, I appreciate and applaud you for trying to keep it as minimal. But please understand, uh, if you've got, if it's one time, let's get it done and move on and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yes. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms.
Next, Ms. Mitchell, I don't know if you want to talk about your one? What's been happening at the library?
Um, I just, I'm sure some of you have heard that my library stinks. And it's a spell that we've been trying to, um, discover how it's happening and then also to take care of it. Um, I know that Jennifer with the grants, uh, sent somebody over today to take a look at it. And I'm thinking that grants may be what pays for it or something. But, um, I appreciate everybody working hard for it. Um, I have no clue how it's happened, but, um, they're going to take care of that. Although this, because of the rain this morning, we had water in the floor. So, um, hopefully we can figure out how to fix that. It's a thirty, over a thirty-year-old building and they, it, it just needs some up maintenance and upgrade a little bit. So, uh, if you have any extra pins for me, I would appreciate it. And, uh, whatever I can do to help everybody. I feel bad coming after Robert because he really needs help. But anyway, uh, I appreciate it for everybody.
Ms. Mitchell had a paper presented in December twenty twenty-two, just for a partial roof repair, that fifty-four thousand dollars. But we estimate about a hundred thousand for total roof repair and that report identified over twenty-five weeks on that. So.
Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the last two projects we submitted are from the police department. I don't know if Chief Jackson wants to add any details to those.
I can add details.
This is figuring out.
They had two options on it, but, uh, the first, first one is the awning. Uh, you know, we, we had a real bad hailstorm and a lot of our units got damaged. And I figured we could get some lining on the south side of the PD for the units when officers are working. Uh, where they can take coverage, they shelter, even ones that live here in Lexington can drive down and park those units on the. Cause that was a lot of money tied up in those units that, that we didn't get fixed because they were so old. So this may help us with our new units that we have now. And I think I had another one with the.
The K nine replacement.
K nine replacement unit. We have a K nine unit that the, that has a hundred and twenty-eight thousand miles on it. We don't have a spare unit, so it'll be good that we get a new unit for the K and have one for a spare.
And I would just add on the awning, you know, usually the on-call patrol officers have the four slots closest to the door. The awnings are really expensive because the amount of metal involved and you have to anchor them into the parking lot. So it's a lot of um, materials cost, but if, if sixty-one thousand wasn't enough to equip both, both sides of the parking lot, we could at least do those four for the patrol units so they don't sit there and make in the sun all day. Cause I don't know if sixty thousand is going to cover it. But that's it for this year's submissions and it's, it's up to the commission to rank these as how, uh, one through five or six uh, in order of preference. As I understand it, generally, they look at the first five and consider issues. They're all at reasonable prices.
And I would say really seven with the RV dump that she's going to add later.
We can, yes, we can add that RV dump at the wastewater plant. So we have a main town RV dumping station. Yes. Thank you. Yeah, I don't know, you know, if you could back, if you could kind of lump that in with the wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
Basically what they.
They need to go on this, on this lift station.
So that's time coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's going to work. It's going to be out there at the, at the wastewater treatment plant.
We tried to be pretty, you know.
It has to be at five. I mean, I don't know.
So, uh, North Love Lift Station bumped to five hundred thousand. Okay. And we covered, skip covered his transport nets, which I thought was a great idea, but you get two vehicles for less than one box.
Ms. Chris, evening. We've changed it to sewer lift station and arena. I'm sorry. Change it to sewer lift station and arena. And change the amount to five. And that's two.
And, uh, this will be due this Thursday.
Good. Yes, middle of the season. Yeah, because you lower these other one items only seventy-sixty. So.
Well, K.
Yeah. Yeah. K nine with, with the police on it right there is one thirty. So just combine it two, three, I mean, uh, okay. We need an awning for our new police unit. Yeah. K nine. Build it a little bigger in that way to.
Build it a little bigger in that way to cover the other act too.
Sure. I just didn't know how much we're able to break up the single grant request. Like how many? It's supposed to be just one topic or how?
Because you're still involved the same as the Tina.
Yeah. So you want to do K9 and parking lot awning?
Yes.
Change it to 250 and then you could see both sides.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Because that way if they give you 150, you start everything.
Okay, great. Okay.
That's fine. So you want me to, how much do you want the awning in that?
250, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Total?
Combined with the K9 unit, yeah. And that way we If you don't have 750 below, probably we'll get 50.
We got plenty of money.
And are we sure that there's enough for 80? Might ask 150? And then maybe they'll give us one?
We may have, and I don't, I don't know where the smell's coming from. I have not
I wonder are you gonna say?
That's what I'm thinking.
In school and Tatum, when that wind shifts in the winter, the heater sucks up all the
So we, I would like to see a lift, isn't it?
Today were plumbers.
And they said?
Uh, they're going to get back with me and everything. They said they were going to send smoke in and squirt the hottest paper down that way.
So I would say we need a roof, but let's add, so, so, we, in case there's major plumbing.
Should we say two new roof, mold abatement or plumbing?
Yeah, but if once they pull the roof, you don't know what you're going to run into, so.
Yeah, but it's bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
250.
Yeah. Because it will have
Get it repaired.
State has law.
So like keep a booth? First one, honey?
250.
So that gives us down to five.
We have a lot of money to value here.
Yeah, 99,000 would be at one.
Even now, we've got 266, but we don't know how much will be inflation by the time next year.
Did you add lights and lights and signage and all that to it too?
So again, it should, it's all part of the
Even the precious vehicles, I'm not sure it'll be going there.
Sure.
In your world, yeah.
Any further comments or suggestions on that? Can I let this go?
Yes, sir.
No, oh, did we, did you raise your hand?
No, I didn't. I was trying to make my brain work. Just didn't know if we wanted to go in those, on this miracle rough order that you're in now. Looks good. I'm good. Too TV. Because when we make the motion, they're guys, uh, smart. But you're not going to ask. There you go. All right.
Anything further?
No, sir. Thank you very much. And we will submit those five items by Thursday. We appreciate your help.
Ms. Perez, sir, next one. I, Shannon had contacted me and we were attempting to put a date together. Uh, unfortunately, Mr. Miranda leaves tomorrow and is gone all of this week. I hope they catch you. All of them. Sorry. Okay, definitely. All right. And, uh, for our interview process, we tentatively threw out September the 7th, which is a Thursday evening. Let's see if that would be a good time to have a, uh, interview process.
No.
Just be one. Okay. Ms. Lee, uh, had reached out and basically said she came up with a, uh, some additional questions that were above and beyond the questionnaire that, uh, the candidates had filled out. And so she asked to have these, if everybody was good with them, wanted to add to them. I asked her if she wanted to come and she plans on being here. She's actually on the way to, I believe, Dallas. I don't know where she's from, but she said that that would be, I hope so.
What is it?
Thursday, September the 7th. If we can hopefully come up with a, uh, choice, then possibly on the 11th, we would be able to move in that direction.
What's in?
Shannon, what time would we, you, you stated that, uh, Thursday night was the
It would be a close, like a close session. Before 5:30.
Chris, I know that, that you're the one that gives it's 5:30 good? Everyone else good? It's like 5:30.
I'll reach out to the candidates. Um, and you want, well, you want to interview all of them or, I mean, how?
We, we originally put together three with a alternate. All three of the ones have responded and have returned your
Yes.
background check or paperwork. Have we received all of that yet?
Yes.
Okay, so we're clear on that? All right. Uh, in a, just a brief, uh, conversation with Commissioner Gandy, he brought up maybe bring the, the alternate in addition. Does anyone have a problem or ask him if he would like to be here? He also would have the option of possibly, uh, doing a Zoom or whatever. Uh, it was also brought up, are we going to have time? So I think we, hopefully can do this in a couple hours. Everyone goes with all four? Okay. Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here and let's bring, or let's invite all four and, um, set the date. Sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Move this to 5:30, yes. I believe we're going to turn it over to Mr. Pierre.
Okay, Mr. Pierre, um, City Council. Did they pass up this, um, spreadsheet? Okay. So it's Mr. Miranda. The, uh, the books as far as what will be turned over to the auditor to start auditing have been closed for the fiscal year ended 6:30. On the 3. And, um, Ms. Miranda also stated that, um, we have a expert, uh, working with the city who is very familiar with EFA. And he's working on, uh, getting the information put into their particular form that they wanted. My understanding, uh, uh, the EFA has not given the final blessing on the budget this operating fiscal year. Um, they're still lacking some items, none of them support quarter. Or which needs to be submitted and they're in the process of submitting. Um, I just received an email, um, or came in immediately and he, uh, he's expressed to me that all these numbers were reconciling and back to what we had reported. Um, this, this particular, um, spreadsheet that you see in front of you is kind of, it, um, summarizes the activity. So it lists all the funds that the city has. And, um, and then it starts with the beginning cash balance. And from the previous fiscal year, previous fiscal year, July 1st, 2000. Uh, you notice that some of those are showing negative balance. If you were to look at the EFA's report, it would not show negative balance. The EFA does not accept negative numbers. Um, that would show zero. And within the balance sheet for that particular fund, it would show a liability back to the general fund. Because in a sense, they've left some money to, to make that to zero. But for the purposes internally for the city, it's better to reflect that, the beginning, those that are negative as such. And then there's a few items that, so the state reports wants everything reported on a cash basis. Uh, versus what in the accounting profession we refer off often to accrual basis. Cash basis basically is money coming in, money spent. In cash, money received, money spent. That's how the budget is built in the, in the state or the local public. Okay, so, so, but within the accounting system that you have in pilot, in code, there are some accounts such as accounts payable that are not really, we do not consider them cash bases. But we need to take into consideration for this worksheet. So that's where the change in liability from where we show changes in liability, just a few, and it's basically accounts payable. And the accounts payable, uh, the changes at the end of the year, most of them deal with the insurance. And it's going to be paid shortly after, um, like medical insurance and things like that on the employees' withhold. Okay, so then we go and we reflect the revenues for the fiscal year. And then we reflect expenditure. And then in this schedule, we show what's the difference in that fund? What's a net income for a net loss? And so you can see, for example, the first line, everyone's always, um, in local public bodies, the one fund that you're really concerned with is your general fund. Because that's where you have flexibility. Some of the other funds, for example, lauders tax, lauders tax has to be spent in a certain way. Another is, um, like say, uh, your, your police, law enforcement grant or the fire protection grant that comes from the state. There's restrictions on how that is spent. So they want them to be, uh, for separate. Okay, I mean, so then each fund is going to show a loss or an income for a particular year for this last fiscal year. Now, remember earlier I said the EFA does not like zeros? I mean, it does not like negative, so we need to get that to zero or above. That's why we need to make a tranever. And that's what we're doing here. Um, this 1.3 million, you know, that it seems like, oh goodness, what are we trying to do here? We're spending 1.3 million. We're not, not spending 1.3. What happens is, is all the money is put into this account. So most of the money is put into this pool account. And sometimes a fund will spend more than they're entitled to because management's not keeping an eye out. And they get into a negative. So it's like they're pulling down more of this pool than they're entitled to. But, so to get that back to zero, you have to transfer money from the general fund back into the, into the very funds to get those back to zero. Um, and, you know, I guess that's basically it. So at the end, you can see that at the beginning of this good year, the city had 10 million dollars. 10,281, 113. And at the end of the fiscal year, the city had in the bank 18 million, but 440. The big increase isn't, so if, if I'm looking at this, if I'm, um, if I'm the city manager, if I'm the finance director or what have you internally within the organization, I'm saying the general fund has 9.4 million dollars. So that's where the operating is going to come from. Now, I know that Commissioner Truglio brought up about the, the county money. Where's the county money? Um, so the county money is in that, in that 1.4 that you see from the county, the 5.7. So in the current year, you're showing net income in the general fund of 9.2 million dollars in income. Of that 9.2 million, 5.7 relates to the county money directly. Because some county money was deposited in the month of, um, June 1st or around the 10th or something like that. So, so if you were to subtract that, um, that 5.7 now, then you would, you would say that the general fund had an excess of about 3 million. Just make about, you know, the green going. Well, where did that money come from? And I would say that it's a combination of, of not spending and then the gross receipts is going now. And so that's, that's where you're coming up with that. Now, if the, if you look at the bottom line, what was the bottom income for the whole municipality was 6.3 million on the bottom. But there is a, there is one thing that's a discrepancy or an outlier is the capital projects fund shows a net loss of 3.6 million. The capital projects fund really didn't lose 6.3 million. What happened was the money was set aside at the beginning of the year and most of that money was for the magistrate court. So they didn't have revenues, but they used money. So it's showing that it's a net loss, but it really didn't have a net loss. I mean, it did for the way the numbers have to flow, but, um, I guess, you know, the transfer is necessary to make everything balance. I really feel really this report is just unawesome for, not because we did it, but because the city now understands at June 30, where they stand. Now, the next step is the city has to look at their budget that was submitted at the last, just trying to get something in and then decide where are we going to change and get. I know, I know, for example, we met with senior citizens earlier last, or last week. And the budget in haste, there's not enough money for, for food. And so the budget needs to be adjusted. And since one of the topic of senior, senior citizen, you can see that there are ones that had the biggest, um, transfer coming in. So they lost, um, they lost, uh, senior citizens lost 505,000 last year. And, and I know part of it was about 180 was for a roof that is included in there that didn't get reimbursed. That's one of the things I'm noticing with the city is that you go out and you do these projects and you spend the money, then you don't complete the process, you don't get reimbursed. So you don't get reimbursed, it's coming out of your own pocket. So.
Is this supposed to be insurance?
Yeah, if it would have been reimbursed, it just probably wasn't reflected. And perhaps it was put into the general fund, the insurance reimbursement instead of identifying it for the senior citizens. So it, it's, that's not perfect. I, it's just, what we did was just, um, go with the numbers the way that the city had recorded the transaction.
And just to bear in mind, as I had mentioned, I think I might to fix the senior citizen budget for the current fiscal year is going to take about 330,000 or 300,000 or more. 60,000 that will come out of our general fund this year. And that's just to make the budget right because she wasn't giving her correct budget. So.
And I think part of the problem has been is that, is that, um, there are certain funds, like say the, the senior citizens fund, where they're not going to on their own generate enough um, to cover their expenses. The state and the federal government is going to give them so much cap out money. And then this, the city has to transfer. And this has been part of the problem. The actual accounting transactions to transfer that money has not occurred in the past. And then, so that's where you need to really stay on top of things. And, and you hold people accountable for their budgets, but this, but the general fund has to make these transfers to make these funds whole. And then you say, okay, that's it. That's all we're going to transfer. We're not going to transfer anything else unless the commission increases.
In a sense, oh, oh, tough, tough. That is, I think this, this fiscal year Corbin, when you do Corbin Tom, Tom, that is, I think this, this fiscal year, quarterly, when you do quarterly adjustments, that way it reflects on management as well as cash flow. And we haven't been doing that. And it's not true over, it's just, that's, it hasn't been happening in, in the last few years. And we need to do budget adjustments quarterly, that way the board and all four of us stand on our cash flow and, and, and how we're managing our, our budget.
And hopefully not adjustments, but at least quarterly reviews from each department and to see how they're tracking their budget. And we can identify if they're going, we already have a band in Tyler that if you get 10% above your budget, you're locked out. Every department has that. And that's kind of like the red flag for us. Because they can't spend anymore. And they're like, okay, what, what, why are you already up 10% over? We're not even a quarter into the year. So we're trying to do things like that. Hopefully not too many adjustments, but at, at minimum.
Yeah, I don't like to say quarterly because, oh, you don't have a million dollar adjustment at the end of the year. And you have like a hundred thousand, and that's easy for us as a board to say, we're at that hundred thousand dollar mark. Why were we having to make it? And it's something minor instead of a 1. something million, or it would go wrong. Back to the end of the year. Yeah, and it could have happened in December. And six months later, we're, we're addressing it. I don't, you know, it's easier to address at a quarterly basis that way there's.
Well, my, my hope would be, working with the new finance director, is that this report you would receive monthly. Like, we're trying right now, Melissa and I are trying to reconcile July. So we can get to the July report. And so you can say, okay, so we started with 18 million on July 1st. How much did we receive in revenues? How much did we spend? And then what's the catch now? Then so that you have that report. And then the idea would be that the September report has to get done, like say, a month. So that you know what transfers have to be made to get those back to zero. There are certain funds that hopefully don't want to be anybody. Because the DFA report has to be submitted by 31st of the following month, or the end of the month.
Ed, you've been looking at the city's books for about two years now. Can you kind of put it in perspective where we stand now as to maybe the last three years or so of financial health as a city?
Well, I would say that, that first of all, that you had the perfect storm with, with finance directors resigning and COVID hitting. And the, the revenues coming down, the accounting got all out of work. It was just terrible. And so when we first came in, we were, we were, the idea was to try to get 630, 21 on. And, and that didn't get done until May later. But to answer the question is, the accounting, there's still, it's not perfect. There's still things that. But one of the biggest problems the city has right now is the finance department, slowly, it's not properly understaffed. You need to have a department. And it's really, right now, you know, if you put it on it. And the biggest problem that's happening to the pool account is that activity happens, nobody knows about it.
Being recorded.
It's not being recorded. So the biggest, you, you should see this spreadsheet that I have to do. I say, okay, let's take all deposits that came in in the month of, like, say, July. List them all on there. And then you have to go one by one and say, okay, is this recorded in the book? Is this recorded? And Melissa, right now, she said, part of the issue has been, is you have credit cards, machines at different places, like say in the library and the mortgage and other places. And the people are, they come in and Shannon has in her office, she has a credit card machine. And they swipe it. And then the money all of a sudden, it appears in the bank statement. And it's like, where, where did this money come from? And so now Melissa has to go in there, which should be occurring, is go in there and look, oh, this is a library. And then you have to make sure it gets booked in the book, or recorded in the book. And that's been, that is the major problem, I know. It's just staying current and it's just all this activity. And then you get in addition to that, you got water deposits coming in, coming in at the same time. And so it's just, it's very tedious. It just takes a lot of effort and time to get it balanced. But you have to, you have to balance that account. Then once you balance the account, then you know which funds on this, on this report here holds, who has what part of the fund. Anyway, so I, I don't know, I know you've been on the board on, on the approval of 1.3 million dollars. Do you need me to stay for that? Or did I give sufficient explanation and, or is there questions? Of course, of course. I have one, and that was, I know there was some looking around at the end of last week. The 1.3 that you're showing here is the one that you have put together. But did we determine, we did a budget adjustment in March? Did we, or is this part of it, or was it April? Okay, I'm sorry. It could be part of it. And so what, what we're, what we're doing right now is we're saying what we need to do now. Tracy, problem, the prior financial director will not record those transfers. So we need these transfers to get back to zero or above. Like, for example, in the motor vehicle, all I did was just, I, I made a transfer to get us up 500 dollars. Because, you know, you can make a transfer, make it 10,000, you can make it 30,000, whatever. Just enough to get it up plus. So I think a lot of those, now you may have, you may have budget authority already established for some of those transfers, like in April. In fact, the individual working on those has all the information as far as what's been entered into DFA's report either. But, but the actual transfers never occurred. They never, they were never put.
Well, I hope this new treasurer gets it. I don't want to see it. I want to see it. I hope she has a good plan, a good management system.
There definitely are some that are already approved.
Yeah.
We didn't know if she knew how to put them in.
I understand.
No, no, that's not, I'm just saying, what, what he's referring to is a lot of data. I mean, when you manage it, you can manage it. And it's saying that you prioritize X and X, and you could, that's what I'm hoping with this treasurer that comes and knows how to manage and, and will be able to, and then border reports are a must because this. And that's why my old DFA, I mean, he was there over 30 years. He actually knows the city very well from the other side when he was at DFA. So he's been a huge help and very reasonable. And to address something that said about point of sale, credit card transactions at animal shelter, Shannon, the water department, motor vehicle, we got rid of, or getting rid of Square and Clover point of sale systems. And we're going to one system that's hooked into Tyler, which will better funnel those transactions to the proper places and make our reconciliations a lot easier because just every month, they're very easy.
So it also becomes difficult when you're like, for example, like say we're July 31st or, like say, July 30th is the last day of, of the month working day. But then somebody swipes a card, pays on the internet. They close their book, they stop working at 2:00 at noon, but someone pays at 2:00. So you've got these, all these timing differences. You gotta, you just got to pull it apart and say, okay. So this particular customer, is it here in July? Is it here in August? And it's just, it's time consuming.
So that you were talking about there, that little differentiating as far as with the card transactions make it easy. Because I know it's tedious. But will it give us where that transaction is supposed to go to or not? Or is that something that you're going to have to be going through manually, looking at each and every entry with the credit cards? Is there something that you have that can differentiate, break it up and say, this was library, this was DMV, this was, how was I come across?
You're going to have to work with a software company and get them to, so that they generate the entry. Like in the water system, they generate the entry. And now you have to just look for it in, in the bank.
Right. You're going to have to go through there regardless, but I'm saying to make it that, you don't have to spend 10 minutes on this. You can look and say, okay, water department, okay, library, it's coming across. So you're saying with the company.
You're going to have to invest in that, you know, the credit cards.
Instead of having three separate billing systems, the city will have one.
Right.
And it hooks into Tyler better. It's one of their systems.
But Commissioner Bowles, the answer to your question. You have to have the software set to record the transaction.
Yes, sir.
And then once our transaction is captured.
Right.
Then it's a matter of tying it into the bank. Because maybe they withhold credit card fee or something like that.
Right.
So we're having, Melissa's having to do that.
Right. I, I know that takes a lot of time.
A lot, like a customer, like they have a restaurant. They don't care about, you know.
Right. No, they don't have to worry about.
They have insulatas or they just see cash coming in, that's, they know they collect it.
Right.
But here, we got to know, okay, library.
Yes.
Motor vehicle, city V's.
And I just want to see if there's a way possible to have that, that it can make it easier on the finance department.
So that's where the new finance director is going to have to get together with the software house to get that to work. That's part of the job.
I'll also mention that we invested $26,000 for the utility billing department to upgrade from Tyler 9 to Tyler 10. And Wendy, Wendy says it'll be a lot more efficient on them as well. Trying to get everybody up to date with the technology.
The good thing with this is that you're not, and it gets stayed current, is you're not shooting into it.
Right.
You know exactly.
Right, you know your, right.
And then once you know where you stand, then you can adjust your budget accordingly. And then you hold your people accountable.
As I said, if you've got accurate information, you can make accurate decisions. And that's what I'm looking to get.
I'm sorry. Anyone else? Ed, thank you. We appreciate it. All right. Include their non-explanations. Leave this to Mr. G.
I know. Mr. Ray, let's make a motion for resolution 2023-086, approval of grant agreement with Mexico tourism. I'm sorry. Did you say your name? Sorry. Just, can I run you a second?
There, commissioners, the resolution is to, for an agreement with the New Mexico Department of Tourism. This grant was received or called for by the New, from Livingston Main Street. This 5,500 dollar, right? Yeah. The 5,500 dollar grant is going to be to help do beautification and improvements to both the friend Ashley and the story book. The matching funds is like 1,375 dollars, but Main Street can use in-kind match through volunteer hours and other things like that. That motto, would you like to say anything? That she does keep up with very well. So actually no catch out of pocket after we get the reimbursement.
So I just wanted to say, we've been maintaining the green spaces in downtown Livingston since before I became the executive director in 2017. Of course, I have never been alone. New Mexico True is one of our grants as well as we got others, including high school kids. They'll help. I really think the reason why we keep getting this grant is because we continue to follow and implement it within the time allowed it. We always have a match, whether it be in kind or cash. This year, originally I was just going to do any kind, but Chevron actually gave us two grants to assist with the maintaining of the green spaces. And we just want to make sure that we ensure that they stay green because if you actually change some pictures in the community as well as the aesthetics, and I know it's a lot of work, but we really like how beautiful they end up looking when we're done.
We appreciate it. Thanks. Anything further from his ball? Seeing that, Shannon, roll call, please.
Mr. G.
Yes.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. White. Mr. Trujillo.
Yes.
And Robert.
Yes.
Mr. Murray, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023-087 to advertise ordinance 602, annexation of zone change to the Hernandez properties. Okay, I have a motion. Thank you. This resolution, Mr. Ball.
Yeah, so the owner of the property, he proposes Hernandez, his son is here to answer any questions you have. What they're wanting to do is the space just to the east there, the biggest part of the circle in the light green circled and red there is the, that is county, that is in the county. The rest of his property is in the city limits. So we wanted to annex in all of his property. Zone it as commercial. The, the red area is where his property is currently in the city limits, zoned as single family. We had changed the zoning right below him on Commercial Street to commercial zoning because it was single family also. And most of this area along Commercial Street has been commercial use for many, many years, over a decade in fact. So that's, this is where we wanted to annex in that property and do the zone change for his property that is within the city limits. Did you have any questions? I know he's doing this to. Victor, did you want to say anything? This is, go ahead, introduce yourself.
I'm Victor, her name is Warren Race here. Looked at this crystal plant, the D, whatever it is, it looked like a connect for it. It just didn't make any sense. Crystal, and I'm not bragging on her, she's amazing at what she does. And she made me as a citizen just so much more comfortable with looking at that pipe, getting it redone. It was just, I don't know what happened. It was just a nightmare. It was, it was horrible. But I appreciate any consideration into annexing the, the bigger half of the process and, and zoning that entire property, which most of it around it is already commercial. So it's not a far reach. Your consideration should be greatly appreciated on behalf of myself and my head. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes. I don't see anybody ready, so I think we're good. And we appreciate you giving, and giving this explanation and a, yes, commendation. But again.
Oh, yeah. I just have one question for Christian. So agriculture, does that fall under commercial industrial?
It would fall under commercial. Yeah, it's not an actual industrial use. It is.
It's commercial. That's my question. Yes.
If I'm allowed, so I will let you know if that's annexed into the city. Right now, I give them burn permits. If they're annexed to the city, they'll burn permit whatsoever, ever. Because city is not allowed a burn permit. I just thought I would mention that because they're always coming and getting burn permits from me.
Who is?
The, the ones that's in the red, even though they're already in the city.
They are in city limits. Yeah.
I thought that was all county. I thought that was all county.
Oh, no. They've been in the city limits for very long.
Well, like last year they got burn permits for like, uh, to burn like limbs and some tree, like, uh, uh, tree limbs and weeds and that kinda stuff.
That, that, that's news to me. I don't know who, my dad speaks English, but he doesn't know enough to come and ask for a burn permit. And he would rely on, for you to rely on me to do that for him, honestly, since I'm here.
So maybe is the property further to the north? Because just to the north is out of the city.
It's, it's that property. I, like I said, I, I'm not aware.
Okay. Well, I'll just, I, I saw that, so I just thought I would bring that up.
Why? Yes, I'll let him know. Okay, for sure. Yeah, that's.
So the main reason is to help clean up his, uh, his, his property needed records. Um, you know, when you look at, he's looking at his father getting older, they've got to get some kind of plan together. Um, it's too hard. Different realtors are like, well, we can't assess this because this is attached to it, but it's not. It's, it's, it's muddled mess. So this will help clean up his records. So it's easier for them to get the work they need done, uh, to assess his problems.
Are you still formulating or are you just? Yeah. But basically everything that's in the red is pretty much residential housing, correct? It's there.
Uh, that is, it's currently residential zone. They do have the water hauling, um.
That's to the north of there.
That's, well, right there in the north edge of the red is where the water hauling is. They can actually show you. Yeah, right there is where the water hauling all is.
That's the water. It's a water station.
Yeah. Right, things up there. So.
Actually.
So that actually needs to be commercial zone because.
Yes, and all of that services for the, for the.
For the.
Right. That's what I was, that's what I, I think that's what. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So.
Yeah, no, this is just a.
So we're just converting, I think, the commercial there.
Correct.
And the stuff behind them on the far east side of the low, it's like a pipe there here, but no, that's not what it is.
Where are you going? Way up there on industrial?
You're going east, east, east.
You've grown nothing.
Yeah, east, 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 right. Little bit more, little bit more.
Okay. So that's out of the city limits on industrial.
Trying to figure out what it is.
I, I have no idea. That's not our.
It's that, it's man welding out there, isn't it?
Well, it's what used to be, you know, I'm gonna chase the alage.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Commissioner, anything further? Seeing that, Shannon, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner T. B. M.
Yes.
Commissioner Gane.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eighty-eight approval to hire financiers. Okay, we have a motion. Second.
Do I need to add a name to that?
Oh.
It says in there.
I know, but I didn't, didn't read that part. So to hire, uh, net Cooper, that's finance director. Whatever motion I say. Restatement.
Since we, uh, our last meeting, we agreed a hundred and it's a hundred and ten. Now do we need to add that as well?
This is in at a hundred and ten.
It does say that.
Yes, okay, okay. Thank you.
So the reason I brought this, uh, resolution before the commission is, as you know, we, we went through the process of hiring a finance director. Act of, consisted of five persons. We narrowed it down to two. Uh, there was an unanimous vote of five people on the review board that Ms. Cooper was deemed most qualified for the position. She has extensive experience and qualifications. In negotiations, a price of a hundred and ten thousand was agreed to be more appropriate. However, since this falls outside of the band of where we advertise from seventy-five to a hundred, I thought it was important for the permission to just check that box. And, uh, we are hiring her at a ten.
I can say that I was on the wrong page, please.
Any questions? I'm not sure it'll pay for her coffee. Just the experts will pay for the coffee if she's gonna be drinking, if she drinks coffee while she's trying to straighten all this out. All right. Hearing no questions, Shannon, roll call, please.
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Gane.
Yes.
Commissioner T. B. M.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eighty-nine approval of the I C I P out allocations with, uh, wastewater treatment plant, number one. Number two, the, uh, Love Street slash Harvey dump. The medical transport vans as number three, the library report pairs as number four. And number five, the, uh, canine unit slash parking lot.
Second. Okay, I have one for a second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Shannon?
Commissioner T. B. M.
Yes.
Commissioner Gane.
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner Ball.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine zero asset management program. Okay, motion second. This resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, uh, this just means that the city commission is approving and standing behind, um, our asset management program. We engaged Sauer and Miller and they employ something called the New Mexico Environmental Center's A M Can Work Manual, um, to standardize this asset management program. It's the gold standard of asset management programs. And this also gives the city more teeth where this is not just a program that was brought in by the city manager. This tells the department heads of our city that we have buy-in with this program, we've enforced this program with all department heads and that we take it seriously and that they need to follow. So it gives it a little more teeth.
Now, it's just the program specifically designed for the city of Livingston or is this one of the huge?
It's a standard program, but they went through and did a whole asset list. So they're gearing it towards, uh, our city based upon our assets, but also gearing it towards the departments that needed the most. Um, Leo Wilson, who's part of this program and works at the wastewater treatment twice a week. So they know our problems and, and they're really fine tuning it towards our city. It's a great program. We had a second or three trainings. They literally go through, I think, the ninety-eight percent on tang all our assets, um, photographing them. So, so far so good.
Shannon, I just wanted to make sure that they were specific for Livingston because everybody, every entity is different, individual. So what's affecting some communities, some cities could not be affecting elsewhere. It's, it's affecting us, cannot be affecting others communities. So.
I think when we complete this, this will put us in the top four or five cities in the state in terms of our asset management program. It'll also help us on audit because that was a lot of time in the past, a long time.
Right. Uh, it's a recurring.
All right. Any further questions? Shannon?
Commissioner Gane.
Yes.
Commissioner T. B. M.
Yes.
Commissioner Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes. Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero ninety-one approval of receipts of Lee County funds. There's motion in seconds.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, this is slightly adjusted, um, from the resolution that was previously sent out. This is just a little housekeeping, uh, acceptance of Lee County's funds of five point seven million. Commissioner White, we looked at some previous grants which have been approved by resolution, but the hundred and twenty-five thousand for animal services operations, that was a later grant that we got kind of in between. So that's also on here. It's just accepting the funds which we already have.
We've already accepted them, so we're gonna say we, we can't accept.
Yes, sir.
All right.
We probably don't handle the, uh.
Ed, any questions? Ed?
Commissioner Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Gane.
Yes.
Commissioner T. B. M.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh ninety-two approval of one point three million dollar budget adjustment. We have a motion in second.
Do we need any further discussion on that?
Unless you have any questions here.
This is cleaning up our boxes and our.
Yes, sir.
No, I just, I just wanna put out there that I'm happy that we're getting things squared away, which need to be done. And I wanna make sure that the person that's gonna be sitting in that chair, regardless of who it is, they do a diligent job of making sure that we don't get back to where we're, where we're at.
I appreciate.
As balancing budgets, keeping on top of the budgets, like Commissioner T. B. M. said, you know, quarterly budget adjustments if necessary. So I mean, it's really important to get things squared away and I'm a hundred percent behind it. But we need to make sure that whoever in that position, there's a damn good job to make sure that we don't get back to where we were.
As a person who's looked through it firsthand, I couldn't agree more.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Ball. Shannon?
Commissioner White, yes. Commissioner T. B. M.
Yes.
Commissioner Ball.
Yes.
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 Make motion, please, Bills.
Sure.
There are a motion in second.
I told you.
Any questions discussing?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I'd point out on page one, Tampa Auto Bill Services thirty-nine thousand, five hundred was used during, uh, using COVID funds. And that was to do a muching out, a hinging out of some large bases wanting to have the wastewater treatment.
Page two, number one, four, eight, four, seven, ahead, right this side.
Oh, Brad Threeson? That's the gentleman who shut off the fireworks. That was our pain for him to shoot fireworks.
Were we talking about possibly having him do it again next year?
Yes, he, he said as of right now, he's still, he's good for next year. Because otherwise, if we go with an outside source of the, that's gonna cost us like twenty here. So that's costing us around here.
On page ten, you'll see, um, an additional charge against waste management of New Mexico sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. That was put against the, uh, operation cleanup funds provided by the county.
So the money that was put towards that came from the county?
Yes, sir. Fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Is there any more money in that?
Yes. This is the second batch. We, we exhausted, you remember, Dr. Martinez started our operation cleanup with the seventy-eight thousand. That we have, uh, made, we didn't see the auction. And then when that ran out, the county offered us fifty thousand. So I think we have about thirty-five thousand left.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let's go on that same line item. You kinda tell us what, or tell me, you've got number, you've got a dollar figure on the left-hand side that doesn't pertains to the right-hand side. What is, what is the, what are the two figures?
Um, so maybe the town's Bibble clerk is new and she didn't erase the left-hand side. It's part of a template and she's supposed to take that off and she forgot to go.
That's simple. Okay. I, I just was trying to make it or tell them. I was struggling.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Anyone further? Hearing that, Shannon, please.
Commissioner T. B. M.
Yes.
Commissioner Gane.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Ball.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Before you, so I'll just inform everyone, we are going to be going to a closed session. It'll take a couple of minutes before, uh, we start that and, uh, to what I'm saying. Don't have no clue how long it is. So, uh, Andy, I'm sorry.
Six to Danley.
Yeah. Crystal, if you, uh, if you're leaving, might think of that, these papers.
I'll wait. Yeah. I'll go grab it sometime.
Okay, cool. Okay. Mr. Roll, sorry. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make motion going to closed session, section ten, that fifteen, dash, one. N M S A nineteen seventy-eight, subsection seven, dash, eight on threat of the fourth being litigation. We have a motion in second.
Hearing no discussion?
Roll call, please. Yes.
Mr. Ball.
Yes.
White, yes. Commissioner T. B. M.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. All right. Take a couple of minutes.
Forty. Take a minute. I have the time.
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
We're up. Commissioner Gane.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go back into regular session. Uh, matters discussed in closed session, we're limited only to those specified in the motion for closure and no action was taken. Okay, I'm not trying to second. Go back to the open session. Any discussion? Okay, Shannon, roll call, please.
Commissioner T. B. M.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Gane.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. With that, the items of the agenda are exhausted. We are adjourned.